Okay, thank you very much for joining us today. We're interviewing two candidates for San Diego School Board. We have a three-term incumbent, Richard Barrera, and his challenger, Camille Harris. An important position, San Diego Unified School District is the second largest in the state, and it has a budget of $1.5 billion and about 100,000 students. And just a little quickly, for those watching, a rundown on the candidates. Richard is a former labor official, the son of a Colombian immigrant, a parent of two sons of his own, both products of San Diego Unified. Richard graduated from El Cajon Valley High School, holds a bachelor's in history from UC San Diego, and a master's in public policy from the John F. Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. And Camille is a San Diego native, a Sweetwater High School grad, has a Bachelor's of Science in Business Management from San Diego Christian College, and went to Azusa Pacific University, where she earned a master's degree in educational counseling and an EDD in educational leadership, and is currently a professor at both Point Loma Nazarene College and San Diego Miramar College, mentoring and supervising school counselors. And you also have a son. I'm not sure how old your son is. Is your son school age or?
He's an adult.
Okay, an adult son. Okay. Thank you very much for joining us. Let me ask you first, obviously, since March, students have been distance learning from home, and now with the new school year, we're trying to figure out how and when to reopen. There is a plan for that at the district, but there's also a parent group called Reopen San Diego that has been critical of that effort, calling for more transparency, a better timeline, although we're working to a date now, I think, which we can talk about, and a better timeline. And thousands, I think a couple hundred, a couple thousand parents have signed that or people have signed that. So I guess first to you, Richard, how would you grade the district's reopening efforts to date? And when will we have a sense that reopening is going the way that it should?
Well, I would argue that reopening is going the way that it should. But, you know, we're trying to navigate through a very unknown and constantly changing situation. So, I mean, I think grading our reopening efforts is probably something, and I would say this about any school district, is something that, you know, a final grade will be when we understand better, you know, some time from now, whether the decisions that we made were the right decisions at the right time. Based on, you know, the information that we have, but also the information that we've sought, I believe strongly in our reopening plan. So, the reopening plan, of course, has to begin with strengthening our online learning program. We learned a lot in the spring, and, you know, I think, I think our online learning program in the spring was very challenging and not sufficient. But, again, I don't think that was because of any lack of effort on the part of educators or principals or parents or students. I think people tried very hard, but it was trying to adjust to a situation that nobody had ever experienced, and we learned a lot. And we put into place a much more robust online program for the beginning of this year that will always have its challenges. You know, no online program can ever come close to substituting for in-person learning, but it's going much better than what we saw in the spring, and I think it's been a better experience on the whole for students, parents, and educators. So, we have to continue to implement a strong online program, and then our phased reopening plan is based on guidance that we sought from a team from UCSD. So epidemiologists, virologists, public health experts, people who, you know, who understand the situation as well as anybody, I would argue, in the country. And, you know, their recommendation is that we have to pay attention to both the spread of the virus in the community and to the mitigating strategies that we put in place onto campus. And we're very clear about what metrics we're looking at in terms of community spread and also what strategies we're putting into place on campus. So I think we're very clear about that. And most importantly, you know, the advice was, go about this carefully and slowly and in phases, because we continue to be in a situation in terms of, you know, community spread that's precarious, you know, in San Diego County. That's certainly nothing like, you know, the level of mitigation of the virus that we see in many of the countries that have reopened schools. We're just in a very different situation in this country and in this county. We believe that we have to be prepared, you know, for the virus being here and being on a roller coaster for probably, you know, the next couple of years. You know, we don't think this is going away. I mean, that would be great, you know, if there was a vaccine and everybody got vaccinated, but I think we have to be prepared for a situation where this virus is going to be around and we're going to see ups and downs in terms of community spread. And so that means we have to continue to work hard to put the mitigation factors in place, to be very clear about monitoring, and to take initiative and not wait, you know, necessarily for the federal government or the state government to figure this all out. So, and the last thing that I would say about this is, right now, we are working with UCSD, with the teachers, on trying to develop a more comprehensive testing plan that we think is important in terms of allowing for stable reopening. You know, it's one thing to open, it's another thing to be able to stay open, and a testing program that is comprehensive enough for students and staff that allows us to actually prevent, you know, cases of the virus on our campuses, I think is going to be necessary as we go forward over the next couple of years. So, I think it's a very careful approach. I think we're keeping our eyes on the ball in terms of, you know, a strong effort, knowing that that's going to be here and going to be part of what we're doing for, you know, a while. And it's an approach that's grounded in science, and also, you know, based on us taking the initiative and not waiting, you know, for other people to solve this problem for us.
Thanks for that thorough answer. Camille, how would you assess the district's efforts in this? What would grade, would you give it if you want? Sounds like Richard gave it an incomplete to boil a very difficult circumstance down to one word, but how would you grade it and what would you do differently if you were...
Did you say, "How would I grade it?"
Correct.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's like Richard said, we have never encountered anything like this before. So, I mean, I mean, a lot of what he said is, you know, they're using, proceeding with caution is probably my best description for that. And because we don't really understand this virus yet and how it is constantly, you know, I'm reading an article this morning about the mutation of it, we don't know the level of the strength of the virus. So, there's just so much we don't know about this. And so, I agree with, we need to proceed with caution. We need to, you know, look into preventative measures. I mean, it's like, as Richard was talking, I remember saying, my mom would say, is an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So, you know, I think from a very practical standpoint that, yes, we need to, you know, look to see, well, how can we keep our kids safe? How can we keep our teachers safe? How can we keep our community safe? And it's like, you know, Richard mentioned, you know, every state in the United States, we all have different scenarios. So, and plus the habits of the community, those kind of things. There's just so much that we have to consider here. And yes, we have to really, you know, it's great that they consulted with UCSD. I love UCSD, and consulting with people who are familiar with this. But also too, one thing too, that always pops into my mind is, what are we doing as far as the online learning piece? I don't know, Richard didn't say much about that, but I'm curious to know what is being done from an instructor's standpoint. I know the teachers are having to go through professional development and training to be able to accommodate this situation, which is really tough, especially for those who aren't really technology savvy. And so, how do we accommodate that? How do we, like, the first thing I'm thinking, the people who are instructional designers who are familiar with online learning, how do we accommodate that? And then too, we have these diverse learners, people who speak different languages. So, there's just so much to this puzzle that needs to come together, that needs to be addressed. And so, with everybody sitting at the table, you know, it's like a big round table. I imagine this big round table of people having a discussion, how do we keep people safe? How do we keep our kids learning? How do we keep them, you know, is there prevention? I've never heard anything, and this is my bone of contention, I've never heard anything about preventative measures. Are there preventative measures? You know, if we wait for the vaccine, I shouldn't say if, we will have to wait for the vaccine and see what that even does. So, I mean, it's just an evolving situation, and we have to, I mean, also too, we're running by the seat of our pants handling this, but I think, as Richard said, and I have to agree with him, we have to keep our community safe, we want to keep our kids safe, but also too, at the same time, we need to speak with our parents. What are our parents, I mean, I was on a parent call on the weekend, and just to see the concerns and the anxieties of parents right now going through the situation, those who work, those who are English language learners, those who are single-parent families, we have all these scenarios to deal with. And granted, you know, we're not, all of us aren't Einsteins, we don't have the answers to everything, but I think if we listen in here and evaluate and assess, what are we dealing with here in San Diego? How do we approach this? But also get all the stakeholders involved, okay? What are we doing? What do we have here? What tools do we have at this present time to deal with? And then too, because of, you know, finances, I don't know what's available to the district as far as additional monies, to make sure every student has a laptop or a computer to work from their home. Do they even have internet? We don't even know that. So, there's just a lot of different, you know, if I think in terms of a chess table, there's a lot of things that we have to look at in order to be able to better serve our students, and Richard brought a lot of good points up, and I agree with it, but there's just, I think there's, there's so much more we need to look at to really assess this, and we don't know how long this is going to continue. But there again, on the other side of that, how do we serve our, how do we serve our kids? They're falling behind, and there are kids that are already behind to begin with in the schools. So, is this going to continue? Do, you know, what do we do? We have to make the best of a bad situation and find, you know, resources and experts to be able to consult in how we can pull this together. I'm sure there's other districts that have addressed it differently, and because I don't consider myself and know it all, even though I have a doctorate in education, I'm always consulting with colleagues and say, "What would you do in this situation?" So, and I know that the district has done that on some level, but I think because of these extraordinary circumstances, we need to be consulting as best we can with experts to have some kind of resolution in the status quo right now, what we're dealing with. So, yeah, I just, like I said, I just think we need to consult with people to see how we can move forward. That's always in my mind. I always tell my students, what can you do to move forward? You're always going to have obstacles, but how do we move forward?
The American Association of Pediatrics says that what's being done now is worse for kids than allowing them to go back to class. The American Association of Pediatrics, in an unambivalent, completely 100% strong-throated editorial, said that depriving kids of education, especially K through six at this point, is worse for them than allowing them to go to school and risk the coronavirus exposure. So, to me, this gets back to the fundamental question that I've talked about with Richard for 12 years. Do school districts care more about adult employees or kids?
And I agree with that, and I've read those articles too. I'm not sure who I'm talking to here, but I've read those articles too, and I've read articles too, and it just breaks my heart, because I have, you know, as a counselor, I have worked with students who are depressed already. So, I can imagine in this scenario, how being, you know, they need that social interaction, especially in K six, they need that social interaction. That's where they're learning how to behave, how to interact with people. And these little kiddos are, they're getting depressed, and I'm thinking, this is really, this is not good for them. So, I agree with what you said too. I've read these articles, and it just breaks my heart to see this is happening to our children. And of course, that age bracket too, those are the ones who are the, who are less apt to get the virus too. Contingent also basically too, on their health issues, that they have underlying conditions, that they're asthmatic, that was, you know, those are other things. And those are the things that I'm not hearing predominantly in the news is, when they say, well, this person, we had a spike here, and yet a child passed away from the virus. I want to know, okay, again, what are we dealing with here? Did that child have underlying, you know, underlying conditions and things like that? Those are, just like elderly people, if they have underlying conditions, we keep them safe. Those are the people we stay home. And how do we work and support those students who do have those underlying conditions? But I agree with you 100%, this has had a great adverse effect on our K six population and even on our middle and high schoolers too. So, yeah, our kids are suffering, and that's what's really difficult.
Camille, do you, but before I turn to Richard, let me ask you, it sounded like Chris's question was, does the district and the teachers factor in themselves more than students? Are they more interested in protecting adults than students? Do you want to spend like 30 seconds to respond to that?
Okay. I'm not a fly in the rooms. I don't know what they're saying or what they're thinking, but I would imagine that there's some of that is in there. But, again, you know, we're educators, and that's our primary job. What is really best for the kids? And again, if there are those teachers who are, have, who have underlying conditions, then that's a whole different scenario. But I think our kids have to come first.
Richard?
Two points. One is that the key reason that we reached out to a local team from UCSD is because guidelines, advice, coming from a lot of different entities, whether it's the CDC or the American Academy of Pediatrics, or the California Department of Education, or the California Department of Public Health, have been throughout this entire process, at best vague in their guidance and at worst contradictory. The American Academy of Pediatrics, Chris, one day came out and said, essentially, we should send all kids back to school, and within a couple of days reversed itself and came and said, "Yeah, except you've got to pay attention to those areas where the virus is spreading at high levels." So, there is nobody that disagrees that kids are suffering in this process and that kids are better off being at school than being, than trying to learn online. Nobody disagrees with that. But what's also essential in this process is that we don't get into this kind of dividing people, saying it's teachers versus parents versus students. That will inevitably lead to, that will result in us not being able to move forward with the right sensible strategies that work for kids. I'll give you a couple of examples. Because we have worked hard over the time that I've been on the board, at our relationship with not only the teachers' union, but all of the different unions in the district, because we've developed a relationship where we trust each other and we can solve problems together, we achieved a much more robust agreement for online learning when we started in the fall than other large urban districts in California, in particular LA Unified. I think we are offering at 33%, I think was the figure, more direct, you know, synchronous instruction from teachers than we see in other agreements. And I'll tell you that the local teachers' union, SDA, took a little heat about that from, you know, from other locals around the state. Number two, we were the first large district to establish an agreement to bring back for in-person learning, our most vulnerable students. And that's the plan that we're now moving forward on in our Phase One. So, bringing back elementary school students who need IEP services on campus, homeless students, students who are experiencing learning loss. It's a small group, but it's 12,000 students, you know, which is roughly 12% of the students in our district. And we did that in an agreement with SDA and with the other unions that has not been achieved yet by other large urban districts in California. We, there is no timeline on the horizon, for instance, in LA Unified, to bring anybody back. Long Beach Unified has come out and said, "Nobody's coming back until January." That's not been the approach that we've taken, and the reason that we've been able to move forward with an approach that takes into account all interests, students and adults. We can't just say, "Hey, adults, we don't care about your health and safety because kids matter." Imagine, you know, taking that kind of approach, you know, for the people who are actually directly educating our kids. Our approach has been, let's think about what's best for all of our students and adults, and let's work together to form agreements where we can move forward, and that's what we've been able to do, and it's because we have a foundation of trust and respect with our employees.
Let me ask a specific question to drill down on this a little more about distance learning, right? So, I have two students in my own high school or a middle school who are going through this, not easy. Obviously, I have a roof over my head, and my wife and I are fortunate to have jobs, so we come at this from a place of privilege and means that a lot of people don't. We talked earlier about lack of computers, lunches is a huge issue, but my question is about distance learning. This, the contract between the teachers and the district calls for at least three hours of education.
Live instruction.
Yeah, correct. But having lived this, that's really where the rubber hits the road, right? I mean, so, why three? Why not five or more? How is that number decided? I'm curious how these negotiations happen, right? Like, obviously, teachers want to be safe, we all want them to be safe. It looks like elementary schools, students may be vectors, but aren't going to get sick themselves. It's obviously older people, previous conditions, and I imagine there's quite a few teachers that fit in that category are the ones that we should be worried about getting hospitalized or worse. So, I guess my question to you is, you know, as you're looking, the contract is only for the calendar year or the school year, I'm sorry? And so, it would need to be revisited in future years?
Well, right.
And broadly, then how do you do that? Because you're talking about multiple years preparation, distance learning, et cetera. So, the next time this comes around, how do you try to, you know, ask teachers to do more? Teachers are, should be essential workers, yet they're kind of working half-days is one way to look at this.
Well, they're not working half-days. Teachers are working their full days. It's a six-hour day. Three of those hours are required to be live instruction, but then there's another three hours, which is, you know, about planning, about individual, you know, office hours with students. I'll tell you, Matt, that, you know, what you hear from teachers right now is that the level of intensity in planning alone is more than they've ever experienced, and that they're, you know, right now feeling like they're end-of-the-year tired. And that is because teachers understand, more than any of us in this conversation, how difficult online learning is. And so, if you have a classroom and most of the kids are unable to even put their video on, and you're trying to get feedback, you have to plan for being able to work with students individually, or plan, you know, lessons that take into account that you're going to have technological glitches that get in the way. So, teachers are talking about, they're up until 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, just planning right now, and then having to go and do that work online. So, teachers are working harder than they ever have, and they always work extremely hard. And in the schools in the district that I represent, when you talk about, you know, such high percentages of students in poverty, teachers work extremely hard. You know, the typical, when we're back in school physically, a lot of teachers will tell you that when that bell rings at the end of the day, half of their day is done, but the second half of their day begins, because that's about providing social emotional support, connecting families to services, doing home visits, all those kinds of things in normal circumstances. So, in these circumstances, you know, teachers are working at incredible level of intensity. And maybe sort of an answer specifically to kind of how this works, our agreement right now is for, while we are continuing online.
Okay.
We talk about coming back physically, then that, you know, will require new agreements, you know, for what that looks like. But I think there, and we, you know, it's always, you know, it's the easiest thing in the world is to say things like, "Hey, let's learn from this opportunity and let's come out of it better." I mean, right? That's a nice, easy thing to say, it's a hard thing to do, but that is what we're trying to do. And so, I'll give you one example, Matt.
And just give it brief, so we can...
Give it brief, yes. So, high school, in a few of our schools, has been on the quarter system for a number of years. Most schools have been on the semester system, for reasons that I can go into more detail at a different point. It's better in terms of mitigation of the virus to have all high schools move on to the quarter system, but we actually think that opens up incredible opportunities. And what we would like to do when our high schools come back is have more of a college-like schedule, where students may be taking classes in the morning, but in the afternoon, you have now more opportunities to do internships, take community college classes, do other things. And we think that coming out of the online schedule for high school students, we may be able to continue with the schedule that's actually better for high school students when we come back physically.
That's interesting. Camille, so you are an instructor who I would imagine has done quite a bit of online education yourself, distance learning yourself. What do you think of the teachers contractually and kind of pragmatically and fundamentally about the work that they're doing?
Well, I just, I know, having experienced, I was teaching, I mean, although it's at the graduate level, I was teaching, I was scheduled to teach a class in the spring, and then before my class hit, we had to, then COVID hit, and we had to transition from a full-on face-to-face class, it's never been taught online before, and convert it to an online class. And so, what we did at that time, I was driving to campus to get, you know, just, you know, very quick training, and how do I, how do I present a course to my grad students that's always been taught, you know, online? We got site training, we had some people who are experienced in learning, who are technology people, to support us, so we can present a class that was robust to our students and to continue moving forward. So, I had to learn a program called Canvas and to be able to teach online. And so, I did that, and then also too, since and I've gotten certified in that, and then also too, with me working at Miramar College, having had, you know, doing face-to-face interaction with students as a career counselor, that our whole department went online, and it was, it was done so fast, so, you know, they use Canvas, which I really love, as an online platform to learn, and it was very interactive, the students liked it. In fact, excuse me, in fact, the students said, they go, "Well, I really like this," you know, because there's ways that we planned it out, that we had those actual face-to-face instruction utilizing Zoom, and then we would have, throughout the week, they would do asynchronous. So, we had synchronous and asynchronous interactivity with the students, so at least to keep them engaged. And that's the one thing I always, I did my research on, student motivation and engagement, and so that's one thing I'm really sensitive to, is how do we keep our students engaged and how do we, so we don't lose them? So, the other thing too, is like, how do we educate our instructors? You know, like some, these teachers, my heart goes out to them, to go from doing this all the time face-to-face and then having to convert to online. You know, I would, you know, I would think that there's some kind of training that they could get to be able to do this, and not do everything via Zoom. You know, there's other platforms out there, but there again, that costs money. I don't know what the budget, you know, the school budget has available to be able to do that kind of stuff. But there's so many different platforms, platforms like Blackboard and Canvas, and then I worked also too, when I worked at Azusa Pacific, I taught online learning there as well too, which a lot of students prefer it, but not every student, every child can do online learning, because online learning requires discipline. And K six, you know, as we all know, they're so cute and little, not necessarily as disciplined. How do we interact with them? So, you know, we have to make it, you know, has to be like a good shoe fit, you know? How do we help them to be able to learn and engage them and motivate them, to have the one to come back each day, instead of just meeting like this, instead of having a real person that they could talk to and interact with? And plus too, the environment that they're in at home, what's their home environment? Are they, do they have a quiet place to study? Are they living in a house, a two-bedroom house with eight people living there? I don't know. So, I mean, those are things that I think we need to consider, but also too, there's, to help our teachers, to be sensitive to them, I'm not insensitive to them, because I have taught for, you know, quite some time. How do we help? How do we help them to prepare them so they feel confident to do this? And I know teaching online is a lot harder than face-to-face. And I, and I saw that having to transition so quick in a matter of two weeks to, to be able to do things face-to-face and go online, it was tough. But you know what? We knew it was like running a marathon and we did it. And so I think it's attainable. That's just my thoughts.
A lot of ways you talked about fold into this issue of, of, of declining enrollment, right? There's a lot of reasons why that's, that trend has, has been going on. It's, it's a decade-long trend. Uh, but this year we, we saw obviously 2,500 students, uh, go elsewhere, right? So we're right at this precipice of 100,000 in the district. Uh, I guess my question is twofold. A lot of those are kindergarten students, so that's an important year to, to miss. Obviously the state does not require kindergarten, so parents are allowed to do that. My question for you is what efforts would both of you take to get to reach out to those students to bring, to bring them back? And conversely, each student enrolled in the Unified School District is about $10,000 of school aid. So you're talking tens of millions of dollars then, if these students don't come back, you don't get. So how do you compensate for that? And Camille, why don't, why don't you go first?
Well, I just, I just think back to, uh, again, it's engaging our parents, reaching out to our communities. Uh, you know, letting them, I mean, truly being honest and sincere with them, but let them know, you know? I mean, I know they know we care, but we need to engage our parents and ask them, have these, you know, like, like I said on the weekend, I was on a parent's call with a private, um, um, nonprofit organization where they were getting input from parents and parents had all their concerns and all their concerns were valid. So we need to have that kind of community collaboration. And that's one thing I'm really big on is collaboration. I don't have all the answers, but collaboratively with all the stakeholders, we can come together and find out what is going on. So, I mean, that's, that's what I would do. I would, you know, it's like when I was a, in training, we would do a pre and post survey. You know, get, get feedback from the community. Your voice matters. And so that's the thing is we want to make sure our parents' voices matter, our teachers matter, our counselors matter, our administrators matter. We need to come to the table, so to speak, or virtually, and find out what is the need there. And granted with each school, like each school could have this community thing, you know, hold a Zoom meeting and talk to their, their students there or their children who would be going to their neighborhood school. Get input from the community. And yeah, we might not be able to do all of it, but at least they know that we have heard them. And that's, I think, is a big frustration right now with parents. They don't feel like they're being heard. They don't think like they're being considered. They feel like things are done behind closed doors and that their input doesn't matter. And that's one thing that I remember in, in my years of being on campuses, K-12, uh, community college and even higher ed. Parents want to feel welcome and they're intimidated to come onto campus sometimes. So we need to make them feel welcome, that your voice matters. Tell me what is going on. So how we do it, you know, in this environment is we're going to have to be creative. But I think we need to, we need to have people come to the table and put our heads together.
Thanks. Richard?
So, um, since the first day of school, we have increased kindergarten enrollment by about 600 students. Um, we're still down, you know, roughly 1,500 students from what we projected. But the way that we have increased enrollment is every school has a specific strategy. And to the extent that we can actually develop a specific list of families that we can reach out to and have exactly the kind of conversations that, uh, Camille is describing. The lists are not necessarily easy because if you're a kindergartner, it may be the case that your family would be new to our district and you're not in our database. And so there are different ways, you know, that, um, schools have tried to, you know, work with community partners, tried to identify, uh, families, uh, that have kindergarten-aged students. The reasons that, um, that kindergarten enrollment is down vary. And, and, and we have to understand that as well because, and, and you only understand that, you know, when it comes from listening. There are absolutely, you know, families who are making a decision that right now, you know, with the online environment, um, they're not going to enroll their students in kindergarten because they just don't think it would be a good experience. Um, we think a lot of those parents, when we get back at, to school, will have their students come back. But there are also families who, you know, there's so much going on in their life, you know, the kind of stress, you know, that Camille is describing, um, that a lot of families just, they're not even clear how to go about the process of enrolling. You know, what they were probably preparing to do was on the first day of school, walk their, you know, student down to the school and enroll them. And now they don't even know if somebody's at the school, which by the way, we do have people at the school. So reaching out and having those conversations is slowly increasing our enrollment of kindergarten students. And it, but it has to be that kind of targeted, a specific set of conversations and we're having them. Um, it is very important, we believe, for, uh, you know, students to start as kindergartners. Um, it's, it's, it's an important time for them. Being part of a classroom is, is important. Having access to resources, you know, that you were asking about, Matt, everything from, uh, you know, computer and internet access to, uh, you know, participating in our food distribution that we can make available if you're enrolled as a student in our district. All of those things are important. And so we are trying to get our students, uh, you know, uh, enrolled. The, the financial issue is real, no question. I, you know, this year, uh, the state, uh, budget held schools, uh, harmless. Uh, so in other words, your ADA is basically based on, you know, the, the last year 2019, 20. Uh, but we're all anticipating that next year could be a real, you know, catastrophe uh, in terms of school finances, um, just in terms of the, you know, the anticipated loss of revenue at the state level. You know, and then things like enrollment decline, you know, exacerbate that. So of course it's a financial concern for districts. It's a financial concern, by the way, for charter schools and private schools as well. Um, you know, private schools in particular, there's no way that you can, um, argue that, uh, wanting to open up early is partly influenced by concerns that you're going to lose tuition if you can't bring students back. Um, so, you know, the financial concerns are there, you know, for everybody. But, you know, for us, I mean, there's really, you know, the only thing that we can do is have these targeted conversations with families. Um, you know, try to, uh, enroll as many students as we can right now. Uh, and then, you know, as we start to reopen, we do anticipate that we'll have, um, you know, students who, who, who will enroll who right now are, are staying out.
In 1990, I moved to California. In that period, the states of New York, New Jersey and Massachusetts have approved education reforms that have as a key emphasis whether teachers help kids get better year to year. Presidents Barack Obama and Bill Clinton have endorsed education reforms that try to make sure we look at whether teachers actually help kids get better year to year using objective metrics. And yet California has resisted such metrics the whole time I've been here. I've talked about this many times before, Mr. Barrera. I, I still do not get why you do not think California should do what Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, Obama, Clinton say we should do.
Uh, because the kind of quote-unquote reforms that you're talking about, Chris, and of course this is a conversation that we've had for over a decade, don't work. And, you know, things like value-added teacher evaluations don't work. Um, districts spend a lot of money hiring consultants and buying software programs to implement those systems. And most of them have backtracked and gotten rid of those systems because they never increased student achievement. We have focused on education reform that works. One point that I, you know, I, I wanted to, you know, kind of push back on all of you. Um, in your, uh, you know, editorial, uh, in the, in the primary, um, which I appreciated and appreciated the endorsement. But you said that I, uh, believe that education reform is bad for education. I believe your type of education reform is bad for education, Chris. But we have implemented the most, uh, you know, game-changing education reforms in the history of this district. Number one, we made the UC A to G curriculum the requirement for graduation. That was a massive education reform. When I came into this district, if you were a student at many of the high schools south of eight, you would get to your senior year and want to apply for the Cal State system or the UC system. And you'd have a counselor tell you, sorry, you didn't have the classes that you need to even apply. And by the way, if you had wanted to take those classes, we didn't offer them at our school. We went about a process where we said, every student, not only, not only will have access uh, to the UC A to G curriculum, but it will be a graduation requirement. And then we spent years going through master schedule by master schedule, student by student, and identifying what we needed to do to make sure that students had access to those courses in all of our high schools. And the result has been the kind of student achievement that has eluded the types of re- reform strategies that you're talking about, Chris. We went from about 43% of our students who were graduating, having passed the UC A to G courses. In other words, eligible to apply to the UC, uh, CSU system, 43% to now 70%. And among Latino students, that number was in the mid 20% when we started this process 10 years ago. And now we're over two-thirds of students are graduating on time, having passed all the UC classes eligible to apply. African-American students went from about 34% now to over two-thirds of students. Those are massive reforms that have produced the kind of outcomes uh, for students that have been well documented, whether it's by the Stanford Learning Policy Institute, UCLA Center for Educational Transformation. Uh, scholars who, you know, who track reform that actually produces outcome and closes the achievement gap, point to San Diego Unified as an example of a district that is meaningfully improving student outcomes, particularly, uh, for students who have traditionally, uh, been left behind. That's the kind of education reform that we believe in. And in order to achieve those outcomes in that style of education reform, we've had to work together as a community, not divide people, not get into a, a place where everybody goes into their corners and principals are divided from teachers and, and, and parents are, are divided from both principals and teachers. We've had to create a system that everybody comes to the table, as Camille is suggesting, and put together. And by doing that and, and investing in that type of real education reform, we've produced groundbreaking student outcomes, the best results in the history of this district, the best results of any large, uh, urban district in this state, and arguably the best results of any large urban district in this country. And it's been documented, uh, uh, by, by people who study this for a living.
Camille, a question to you about education reforms. What, uh, uh, reforms do you propose or, or support seeing at, at San Diego Unified? And if you don't want to get into specifics on that, uh, evaluate, uh, Richard's tenure on the board in terms of reforms.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to go there. Okay, I'll just be honest with you. Um, the one thing that I know, having, okay, so just for me, having gone into education for personal reasons and having a son who struggled in school, I just know what I saw there as a, as a mom and then becoming an educator. So from what I'm seeing now, having worked in K-12, worked in, uh, both public and charter schools and, and I also homeschooled myself. And then also going into the graduate level, going into the community college level. The one thing that I'm seeing, and I, I don't know the answer and it's, you know, I don't know what's happening. And I just know from being, right now I'm a university supervisor where I have my students are all over the place in San Diego, who are working in the K-12 system becomes, to become school counselors. So what I'm seeing is, and then plus when they get to the community college level and the grad level, I'm seeing students coming in and thinking, how did they even get into grad school? How did they, I'm, not all of them, but there are some that come through. I'm seeing that there's things that were missed at the K-12 level, probably the high school level, things that students had been more prepared to be in college. Yeah, they may, they may have a great graduation rate. Yeah, they'd be moving forward. But I, when I'm seeing them as a counselor, I'm seeing students that are not prepared. And possibly those are the, and most likely the ones that are students who are disadvantaged, those who have a two-parent family or have a lot of parent support, they're at a better advantage. But I'm also seeing too, that students are not prepared as they come into college. And the only thing I can trace it back to is they're not getting what they need at the K-12 level. Then also too, the, 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 the classroom sizes are large. The counselor-to-student ratio is large. And I know all of this is based on budget. There's not enough money to go around. Through ASCA, the Association of School Counselors Association, the ideal ratio is 250 students to one counselor for high school. That's not happening. So how are these students going to know? I'm, how do the, how are, how is anybody going to know whether or not a student is ready and being able to move forward? So I'm, and I don't, I've seen all these things come to, come down the pike, you know, no child left behind. Uh, now we have what we have now. And I mean, there's all these different things that have happened over the years. Not, I haven't seen where any of it's benefited any of the students. I mean, they sound great in words, but I don't see where it's benefited. And that's, you know, that's, as a school counselor, I see a lot. And even now as a school counselor educator, I'm seeing even more, having worked all grade levels. So what's going on? I don't know. I don't know.
In 1993, Massachusetts adopted education reforms that placed specific emphasis on the responsibilities of administrators, teachers, parents and students to try to do better. Massachusetts now has better scores for African-American, Latino and white kids than California by a wide margin across all income rates. The idea that reform doesn't work is refuted by the record in Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, Florida and Texas. I don't know what to say. I mean, the, the, the record is out there. It shows the changes are better. And while Richard is right about.
I'm sorry.
Richard is right when he says that San Diego has made some impressive gains in recent years. But the fact is that California as a state is far behind several union and non-union states in state test rate, state, state test scores. That shouldn't matter.
Let's just spend 30 seconds.
There's one national, I'm, I'm sorry.
30 to 60 seconds for, for each of you. Richard, you can go first and then Camille.
Okay. I mean, there's one national assessment that's not supposed to be a sort of a summit of assessment, but the only national assessment that actually compares, that, that's a common test, uh, that, um, that, you know, large school districts take across the country. Um, the, you know, National Assessment for Educational Progress. Um, our district outranks nearly every large district in the country in reading and math for both eighth grade and fourth grade, the two grades that take that test. By the way, we are, uh, well ahead of Boston Public Schools, well ahead of, uh, Newark Public Schools, some of the states that you're talking about, Chris. But more importantly, our improvement in those, uh, tests has been significant and is much, much, uh, higher than, um, than we see in any other, uh, urban school districts across the country. The, you know, head of the Council of Great City Schools, um, you know, said that we knocked the socks off, uh, the nation's report card, which is what the NAP is called in the last round. Um, and the reason that we continue to see improvement, none of us, I will never argue that what we have achieved is adequate. It is not even close to adequate. And I don't for a second contest what Camille is saying about her experiences about, you know, students showing up, you know, on a college campus, um, you know, not being fully prepared. Never, I will never argue that point. And the reason I don't argue that point is because I know that we have focused on setting high goals for achievement and actually moved the needle in getting there. We've got a superintendent who believes in her core in professional development, who believes that you can never assume that students are, you know, only capable of a certain amount of learning and that teachers are only capable of a certain amount of excellence. And it's the investment in targeted professional development, uh, along with setting high, uh, high goals like, uh, UC A to G is the graduation requirement that have resulted in real educational outcomes in our district that are again, you know, uh, studied by, uh, by, uh, you know, folks from, uh, from different universities.
Camille, a, a final thought on this subject?
Um, can you restate the question? I'm sorry.
Uh, several states have, uh, adopted education reforms, both union and non-union, that have resulted in dramatic increases in test scores. And my contention, which Richard disagrees with, is that California has not done as much as these states, or at least San Diego Unified has not done as much as these states. So, uh, your, your response seemed to doubt that education reform has a track record of success, where I would argue that New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, Florida, Texas shows that it does.
Well, I, I think to your point, I'm, I'm, from what I've seen, just from my, my experiences, you know, having my. you know, having my own child and stuff, and yeah, I, I'm, there needs, obviously there needs to be education reform on some level, but obviously what we're applying isn't working. So how do we, how do we do this? I mean, again, I always, you know, I, I've read a lot of stuff on what Finland has done in their country, granted that their scenario is different than ours, but we need to be looking to these other places as to see what is working. And then the other thing too, I, you know, was hearing the other day that, that we're not gonna, that we're gonna be changing things with the SATs. So what are we doing that? So, and I know during, during my years of working on my doctoral education, all the research my professors gave us on student achievement, the achievement gap, all those things, it, there, it, there, the needle hasn't moved all that much when you get down to the nitty-gritty and look at things. So what are we doing differently? What, what, you know, what can we do to change all of this? So obviously something is not working and probably, Chris, I think that's your name, that there needs to be reform on some level, but what we're utilizing is not working. Why are we continuing? Oh, that was something I was gonna say, is I've read in the research, there has been a dumbing down for I don't know how many years. We need to keep increasing the standard to, I mean, if you keep expecting not much younger students, then that's what you're gonna get. Not everybody is, is gonna wanna go to, is, wants to go to college, and there's such a push for college. And that's why we have the CTE programs, which, which are awesome, you know, training people in a trade. But, you know, we can't put every student in a box. Every student is, is an individual, and we gotta do what's best to help them. And yes, there needs to be reform, but from my perspective, as an educator for the last twelve years and a mom, I'm, I'm not seeing anything that's worked. So again, I think we need to come back to the table. What do we need to do to do differently? We need to take an assessment and reevaluate what are we doing as educators and stakeholders to help improve our education system. The United States was number one twenty years ago, and now I think we're what, twelve or nineteen? So to me, that's, that's disgraceful. So how do we do, yes, we're California, we're our own place. What do we do? Because California's become such a huge melting pot. We have refugees, we have English language learners. I worked at a charter school that had, were children of refugees, and I saw what was going on there. So I've seen all these different scenarios, the huge Latinx population that have come into the United States. We have all these things that need to be shuffled around. How are we gonna address this to make these students successful so they, they're prepared to move forward in their, in their adult lives and have career readiness, whatever that looks like for each individual? I'm just seeing that something needs to be done differently. And again, that's where we come together as parents, educators, administrators, communities, coming together, doing something different, because what I see right now, it's very disappointing to see this coming, to have a young adult come in and see me. Not all of them, I do have ones that are excellent and very sharp and know what they're doing because they have parent support most likely, but how do we do things differently to help all students?
In two thousand fourteen, the, the legislature, Governor Jerry Brown adopted the local control funding formula, the biggest change in California public education of this century. In recent years, the California Auditor and the California Legislative Analyst Office have put out reports that say the goal of the program has not been met. The goal of the program was to make sure that English language learners, foster kids, and kids from poor families got more resources to directly help them. The auditor's report focused on San Diego Unified, among other districts, and said that in fact, the, the evidence suggests that the money was not being used as it was intended to go directly to help these struggling kids. In fact, that it was often used for things like teacher raises. So to me, this fundamental problem raises a sheen of cynicism over California public education that gets back to, once again, the thing I've been talking about with Richard for more than a decade. Our public employees, are the employees, the adult employees valued more or our kids? Because two thousand fourteen's law has not been followed up with what was supposed to be done. It has not led to increased resources across the board for struggling kids. So I asked the incumbent, what do you think about the criticism of the local control funding formula and how your district and other districts have dealt with it?
Well, first of all, you're misstating items from that audit, Chris. There was nothing in that audit that said districts are using money for teacher raises instead of using money to support, you know, kids identified in the different categories that LCFF is supposed to support. In fact, what that audit pointed out was one of the items that, there's legislation that Dr. Weber has proposed that we support going forward is that at the end of the year, if there's money left over in supplemental or concentration funds, that districts should not just sort of put that money back into the general fund, that that money should carry over into the next year for supplemental and concentration. The audit pointed out that San Diego Unified has always done that, and we continue to do that, and that's why we support the legislation. Bottom line is, in our district since two thousand fourteen, we have seen significant improvement for Latino students, African-American students, students in poverty. We have seen a narrowing of the achievement gap. The UCLA Center for Transformational Learning did a study on districts around the state about who was effectively implementing LCFF in a way that we actually saw improved student outcomes and highlighted San Diego Unified as a district that has achieved increased outcomes for the student groups that are supposed to be supported through LCFF. Stanford Learning Policy Institute identified San Diego Unified as a positive outlier in reducing the achievement gap under the time that LCFF has, has been in existence. But let's remember something fundamental. What LCFF did, which we supported, was it moved, you know, it, it, it increased, it took an existing pie and increased, it increased the percentage of that pie for school districts that had a higher percentage of students in poverty or students in foster care, students with special needs. We supported that, but what it never did was expand the pie. And so we're continuing to be in a situation that we've been in for forty-two years in this state, and Camille talks about where we were as a nation a generation ago. A, a couple of generations ago in California, we were the most invested, you know, state in the country and really a model for the world in investing in public education. And we've seen us drop to rock, rock bottom over the last forty-two years because there are elements that are built into, you know, into whether it's, you know, the state legislature's ability to actually increase revenue for education or voters' ability to increase revenue for education that puts these sort of supermajority requirements in place, even though Californians, when asked and when given the opportunity, consistently vote to increase revenue for education. So we gotta knock out the stuff that was put in place by the people who brought Prop thirteen forward forty-two years ago, who are fundamentally anti-tax folks and did a number over, over years on the ability of, you know, either state-elected officials, local-elected officials, or voters to actually address this core issue, which is underinvestment in public schools in California. Despite the underinvestment in San Diego Unified, we've seen record achievement gains, but let's not pretend for a second that with more investment, if we were just at average levels across, you know, compared to states across the country in terms of investing and, and, you know, per pupil student investment, we are very confident, and we've actually done this analysis, that we would eliminate the achievement gap. If we just got to the national average, we would eliminate the achievement gap. We know that because we've gone in and done the analysis of the programs and strategies that actually have impact in reducing the achievement gap. We can't take those strategies to scale because there's not enough money for public schools in California. So we have an opportunity right now, Prop fifteen, to take the first step towards reforming Prop thirteen and getting more money to public schools. I strongly support Prop fifteen, but that's only a first step. And what we've got to do over the next decade is we have to have a series of reforms at the state level and the local level that allow us to bring in our resources into education, and we need a new conversation at the federal level, which I hope we'll have with the new administration, that increases the federal investment in education. So for instance, the federal government is responsible for funding forty percent of special ed, and they've never done it, and they're not even close. And right now, you know, Vice President Biden is proposing tripling the amount of federal investment into special ed, the amount of federal investment into Title I. And that conversation is important as well. So what we need is increased federal investment, increased state investment, and increased local investment. And when we do that, we're the best return on investment of any, you know, anything that the taxpayers have, because even though we shortchange public schools consistently, we still get improved outcomes. If we get to the point that public schools actually get what they need, have the counseling ratios that Camille is, is identifying, we are gonna see an explosion in student achievement in this state.
Thanks, Richard. Camille, let me unpack that and ask you a series of questions to get at some of the points that Richard made and, and Chris's initial question. First, on the local control funding formula, are you satisfied with how that is being spent and the transparency involved in that in San Diego Unified?
Well, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar or have access to all that information. But what I do, what I do see though is that just from a taxpayer standpoint is when you think, we need to look at the big picture and see in California how we pay the highest taxes, or one of the highest, pay, one of the highest taxes in, in the United States. My, I'm sensitive to that, are we gonna increase more taxes on people? I mean, that, that's my only concern. I think, oh my God, we're being nickel and dying to death. So, you know, I have concerns with that. And so.
And that was actually my second question, so on Prop fifteen, do you, you're opposed to that?
I'm opposed to it. I, I'm, I'm personally, I mean, like I said, I've lived in San Diego my entire life, and I'm seeing how my standard of living has had to decrease because of all these taxes. I mean, tax, you know, here, there, and everywhere. And, you know, it, it's nothing against the schools, but I mean, again, we have to be good stewards, and I'm not saying you're not, the district isn't, but, you know, without knowing what is really under the hood, I need to know how the money is being spent, how it's being distributed, you know, how are salaries being identified? There's just so much that goes into this. And so without having full knowledge of all that, I can't really answer that question honestly, so I want to be fair with that.
And let me, my third question related to what Richard said then is, and Richard, correct me if I'm mischaracterizing it, but it sounds like you, you said you could close the achievement gap with funding that equated to the national average. So.
We could, we could eliminate it.
So Richard's saying more money would, 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 would cure that pretty big societal problem at a time when the country is talking about racial inequities and racial justice? What would your, question to you, Camille, what would be your single priority or your, your, your top way to, to close or shrink that achievement gap?
Well, if, this has been going on for so long. I think from my perspective is that, um, we're not, we're not fully understanding or addressing the needs of our students. And I know I've attended at the community college level, you know, and of course, this is a community college level, it's, it's African-American group called E-Mosia. And there's certain things that, you know, students, how students feel about coming on campus, they're not, they're not getting what they need, or there are certain things that need to be, I mean, each, each group has their own needs, right? And especially right now, diversity and equity is, is a, is a, you know, the topic of conversation, and it's, it's exploding right now. So again, I, I would have to look at each student group's needs, and having counseled students of all colors, specific, I mean, I'm sensitive to it because I'm Hispanic and having grown up in, you know, a Barrio Logan in a national city and stuff. So I would look at each student, each student group's needs to be able to improve the achievement gap, because every, you can't, and I've heard, you know, kind of comments just kind of thrown out there, well, we can, we can just teach, you know, you just teach students one way. No, no, no. You don't teach students just one way. There's, needs to be differentiated instruction to address the students' needs. And then we have course, and you add that, the, the language barrier into the mix, and then you add disabilities into the mix. So in order to improve that achievement gap, if we're gonna look at stats and look at the Department of Education to see how we're improving, we need to look, we really need to look at it, not put everybody, every, every child in this one box. How can we help them to be successful? And then the other thing I wanted to add too is that I have a, my former, my dissertation chair, how he went to DC to work on teacher education. So he felt that teachers weren't getting the training that they need when they're going to school, they're not prepared, and so teachers get burned out. New teachers come in, and unless they know how to have classroom management, they're getting burned out after two years. So I mean, there's so many things to be considered here, and I mean, you can't just make a blanket statement, you know, this, yeah, let's throw money at this and, you know, let, and let us work it out and redistribute things and all of that. There's so many things that I think of as an educator, having been in the classroom, having been a counselor, having been a mom, that we need to look at. We can't, you know, we can't just do things, you know, willy-nilly and just put everybody in a box. We need to look at our students, and because of what San Diego has become, this huge melting pot, that, you know, we're, that's gonna affect our achievement gap, you know, because we have students and we have more English language learners, we have more refugees, whatever, you know, there's more single-parent families than there were in the years past when I grew up. So I mean, there's all these different criteria that we have to look at in order to make our students successful. Every student, from my perspective, when a student comes to a classroom for the first time in their life as a kindergartner, they're all intelligent. Every single one of them have the capability and the intelligence to be able to be successful. But until they get in the education system, it depends on what they're being taught or how they're being taught, that kind of diminishes over time. So, you know, we have to look at the children holistically.
Let me ask you guys a specific racial equity issue. In San Diego Unified, black students are almost four times more likely to be suspended than white students, which is greater than that, that ratio in the county as a whole. Another way of looking at this is black students are less than eight percent of San Diego Unified's population and are twenty-one percent of the suspended students. So my question to you is twofold. One is, is there systemic racism at San Diego Unified? And two, how would you address this issue specifically? And Richard, why don't you go first?
Yeah, no, thank you, Matt. Yes, there is systemic racism at San Diego Unified, and we're an institution in a society where systemic racism is pervasive. So anybody that wants to, you know, kind of pretend that that's systemic racism in our society doesn't enter the, you know, the, the, the school door, doesn't enter classrooms, I think is, is naive. We are also, you know, a system that quite frankly, we've got a huge mismatch between the experiences of our educators and the, and the experiences of our students. So our diversity of our teaching force doesn't come near to match the diversity of, of our students, and that's true across the board. It's particularly true among Latinx students as compared to the percentage of Latinx educators that we have. There are four fundamental strategies that we identified in a board workshop a couple of months ago on fighting back against systemic racism in our district. Number one, it is working to increase, you know, the diversity of our staff and of our educators, and that is about creating future teacher pipelines. It is about working with the schools of education, you know, that Camille identified. And it's also about elevating the teaching profession, because if we go and have a conversation with a junior at Hoover High School right now who wants to be a teacher and is gifted and would be a great teacher, but that junior correctly looks out and says, yeah, but you're getting pink slips all the time, there's layoffs, there's not the kind of support that we need, it's such a stressful job. And then on top of that, we've got people who are constantly attacking teachers and saying, you're the problem, you're the reason why our students aren't achieving. Why would I go into that, you know, when I could choose other professions? So we've got to work on, on, on the first level. We, I, I believe we've worked hard, and I'm proud of the efforts that we've made in San Diego Unified at honoring the teaching profession. For instance, you know, Camille mentioned teachers, you know, in their first few years, across the country, about half of all teachers leave the profession within their first five years. In our district, over ninety percent of teachers stay after their first five years, and that's because of the, both everything from salaries and benefits to the kind of professional development we offer and the kind of support that we offer on new teachers. But, so one big part of this is. But so one big part of this is growing a future teacher pipeline and having our education force match the experiences of our students. Second, you know, key area is our curriculum. So I, along with Dr. Whitehurst Payne, brought forward a resolution that is similar in terms of, you know, the level of education reform, you know, the magnitude of education reform. We're now making ethnic studies a graduation requirement in our district. And it's not just offering a single course for high school students. That's part of the process. But it's embedding the concepts of ethnic studies throughout our entire curriculum, all the way down through all grade levels. And that's about a curriculum that's relevant to our students' experience, that speaks to our students' experience. And that actually, you know, Camille talked about motivation and engagement. It's a lot more engaging when you understand your own history and when you know about the contributions that you've made to this country, rather than to have ignored or you portrayed, you know, as some sort of problem. So, you know, embedding ethnic studies across our district is, you know, I think a second key pillar. A third is directly addressing the point that you raised, Matt, which is racist practices and student discipline. And, and that, you know, that is, we see that at a lot of different levels. You know, we see it in the individual classroom. We see it when a student is brought to a counselor. We see it when, you know, a school incorrectly, in my opinion, asks the school police, you know, to come onto campus and work with a student that it's really a discipline matter that should be dealt with, you know, at the school level. It's not a criminal issue. But we've got to address that at a variety of different levels. We just had a big training yesterday with Dr. Bettina Love, you know, who's been doing professional development that calls out and challenges, you know, these racist practices around student discipline. And the fourth is racist practices around grading. You know, it is a common experience, you know, in our district, which I will always speak for. I believe that's true across the board in public education, where your grade often depends on your relationship with your teacher. And your relationship with your teacher, it may be very different if the teacher doesn't relate to your experiences, doesn't know how to, you know, understand you and might understand, you know, a different teacher in a different way. So interrupting racist practices around grading, around student discipline, embedding ethnic studies into our entire curriculum and building a teacher pipeline that diversifies our teaching force. Some of these things we can get to more quickly than others. Some are, you know, more long-term strategies. But the last thing that we did in this workshop is we actually said, we've got to hold our district accountable to better outcomes along all of these areas. And so we created an independent citizens oversight committee, which is a sort of a concept borrowed from school bonds, where you've got a group of people who, their job is to report out to the public how we're doing and have full access, you know, to our data. Our intention is that this independent citizens oversight committee, which would be about a third, would be students, we'd have staff, we'd have community leaders. And every quarter, they would have the district report to them about our progress being made in these four areas. And then they will report to the public, you know, how our district is doing. And I think that level of accountability is necessary if we're going to continue to focus on these areas, not just because we're in an intense national conversation today, but what happens, you know, when we go forward over the next, you know, several years. We can't just sort of get back to these issues whenever there's a big national conversation. This has to be something that we're doing consistently over time. And we need to be held accountable by the public to making progress in these areas.
Thank you for that holistic answer. Camille, that question to you, do you think that San Diego Unified is a racist system? And how would you tackle the issue broadly and specifically on discipline?
Well, I think, I think, I think we've improved over the years. But from my perspective, from a counseling perspective, I think if the adults, as the adults and the educators, we're the leadership on the school site. So I kind of think of it a little bit differently. So if a teacher, if a teacher or counselor understands a specific group of students, then I think that the response and the reaction to student behavior would be a little bit differently. And I know when I, one of my grad students did her thesis specifically on this, on African American students being disciplined, you know, too harshly or too quickly in the school district. And from what I've seen is that there's a lack of understanding on the adults' part as to what's going on with that student and understanding that student's demographics or whatever, whatever they're dealing with. And I think as adults, we need to understand it. You know, me being Hispanic, I understand my own ethnicity and my culture. As, you know, other people of different ethnicities and, you know, whatever, you know, whatever, you're white, brown, black, whatever. We need to understand each other and we need to have a meeting of the minds. And again, I go back to that whole collaboration piece. We need to understand our students. And if a teacher, I'll just use a teacher as an example, nothing against teachers. If the teacher doesn't understand that that African American or Latin student is having certain issues at home, the behavior is going to come into the classroom and then they're going to get suspended or expelled, whatever. And if it's repeated, you know, it just goes on and on and on. So if we don't have, there's a lack of understanding and you're in a position of not knowing what's going on with that student. Yeah, you're just going to say, you know, you're disrupting my classroom, you're out of here, you know? And I've seen that happen. I've had to go walk into a high school classroom in Point Loma for once, when I was doing my training. A student was misbehaving and talking out of turn and, you know, I had to pull him aside and talk to him. And I just think sometimes we don't understand what's going on. And it could, it could be systemic racism. It could be many other things. I don't like putting a, you know, just, you know, slapping a post-it note on something and saying, it's definitely this. There's just so many different variables that go into this. And again, it's a lack of understanding and a lack of appreciation of people. And the other thing too, and I think about even in the K-12 situation, why do we stop character education? I'm not sure if it's still there. Richard probably can address that even more. But I remember when I was at, I remember at a school site in San Diego, I was at Cherokee Point Elementary School as a counselor. Character education was a big thing on the front of the school. And that's teaching children to respect and honor each other in, you know, in their school site, in their community, their school community. So, I mean, I look at this from a totally different perspective. And being a person of color, in the experiences I've had growing up, yeah, like I've experienced racism. I always describe it as kind of like an undertow. It's not overtly spoken of, but it's an undertow and you can detect it in people's attitudes towards you. But again, it's all about respecting people, respecting and honoring people for who they are, understanding the cultures. And because there's a lack of understanding, you know, maybe these classes will help and embedded into the classroom will help people have a better understanding. But again, first of all, it has to start with respect and honoring people and appreciating people for who they are. So, you know, like I said, I look at it differently. Again, I look at it holistically. I look at it, you know, culturally. I look at it as from a counseling perspective. And so I don't want to just say that to me, racism is such an ugly word. And we've seen so much horrible things happen in our country over the last few months that just, I just, I'm thinking, oh, my goodness, what is going on here? And yeah, people are sick and tired of being sick and tired. But I think if we respect one another, and it starts with us as educators to show that we respect and we honor each other for who we are and not to have these preconceived notions in our mind, oh, well, this person is this way because they're this or that or whatever. We need to understand each other. And I just think sometimes we just, you know, in our society, we forget about all that. So I know it's a different perspective than what's been stated here, but I look at things so totally different because of my own personal experience as a person, as a person of color, having where I've gone to school and then coming in as a mom and having a child, having to deal with all the stuff that's gone on. And then now being in the trenches as an educator from K-12, you know, working at San Diego Unified, working for a charter school, doing homeschooling, working in independent study charter school, working in graduate level, working at the community college level. I've seen all these things that have gone on and I'm thinking, how can I make a difference? Why is this happening? It shouldn't be happening in education. I'm just going to say that right off the bat. This should not be happening in education. We're the leaders here. And yes, teachers are not appreciated, but we need to be doing things differently. I don't know what that is, but this is why, you know, this is why I'm here to this day.
I appreciate that answer as well. I mean, we probably could have spent the whole 90 minutes talking about racial inequities and racial issues. But in the interest of time, why don't I, Chris and I have asked a lot of questions. Any board members apart from us who want to ask any last questions? We probably have time for a couple more.
I'll go ahead. Kristi and I just finished working on a project where we talked to a lot of members of Gen Z for our podcast, Hello, Gen Z. And what we learned is, I mean, we already knew it, but they just, over and over, talked about how organized they are online, how they're pushing for changes in their textbooks and they're organizing school walkouts. And we even had one who wrote an op-ed for us talking about defunding school police. And so I wondered what role, I guess, maybe starting with Camille this time, you think that young people and their sort of digitally connected universe fits into what you'll do as a board member? But also, how much time do you both spend on TikTok, Facebook? Not Facebook, TikTok, Instagram, Discord, the places where Gen Z spends their time?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm, I'm, I know, I'm hearing a lot about the Gen Z that you all are just up and coming and you're heading in the right direction and you understand the digital age and all of that. I mean, I really appreciate that because I think a lot of people don't. And so, I mean, I appreciate that. So I mean, there's just, and I think you're heading in the right direction. But I think, again, because of, and I told my son this the other day, because of your, you haven't experienced the things that I've experienced. You know, I've seen all, I mean, in my lifetime, I've seen so much come through and how we've evolved and technology has just, you know, bursted on the scene. I'm a lot on, my thing is Instagram. I don't do, I don't, I'm not really fond of Facebook. I love being on Instagram and then I'm starting to doing things on, you know, that I have with other groups and I'm a part of too, that other, I have, if you saw my phone, you see all the apps I have on it. So I'm on, I'm, I love technology. But also too, I see where it's kind of harmed our, some of our students. And then the research shows, and I know you may be better at this, but what I'm seeing in the research shows that the attention span of students today is so much less because of the use of technology. And like I said, I love technology. I've been that way from the get-go. I think, oh, God, this is so cool. But, you know, there has, it does bring some disadvantages. And I'm really glad that you say that most students in your generation, Z generation, are very technology savvy and I appreciate it. But there's also, we're seeing as educators and having taught online in three different platforms, I'm seeing that there is, there is a problem in teaching students and how we need to shift gears and how we're teaching now to meet those students' needs. And I'm 100% for it. But like I said, it's, we're, again, we need to come to the table. How do we support our students of this next generation to make them career-ready when they're done with school? So, but like I said, I just have time for Instagram and I'm thinking, I'm trying to think what other ones that I have here. I'm on, I'm on Band and Signal and LinkedIn. Yeah, I had, there were so many more. Oh, I was on Periscope. I had to stop some of it because it's overwhelming. Now I'm just kind of more focused on Instagram now. So, but yeah, I love technology and I love that you, your generation is very technology savvy. But I see where it's also hurting learning in students too. And sometimes that's missed because of that. Did that answer your question? Hamby, Tabby?
Yes, thank you. Richard?
Yeah, so, you know, my, my day job, I work with the Cecil Travis Service Clubs. And it's all about, you know, helping young people identify, you know, what issues they care most about and believing in themselves and having confidence and having skills that they can go out and actually, you know, make change in the world now and in the future. Something that, you know, I believe more deeply in the idea that young people can and need to take control of their, of their communities and of this planet. I think than anything else. And I think the public education system needs to see as one of its core purposes, building that capacity and motivating young people to believe that they can go out and make the world a better place. We've had so many examples in the time that I've been on the board of really incredible comprehensive change that's come about because of student organizing and student activism. The move to UCA to G for All was very much a student-led effort. In particular, the Metta Clubs at Lincoln High School and Mission Bay High School, you know, took a real lead on saying, this is just not acceptable that, you know, in our schools, we don't have access to the full complement of A to G classes and the district needs to change that. And we had, and we did. Moving, removing rifle ranges from campuses, that was a student-led campaign. Providing for halal food as an option at Crawford High School, Mann Middle School. Those were student-led efforts. We have been very supportive and worked directly with student organizers and actually supporting the climate action walkout, you know, that we've seen over the, over the last year. So, you know, I believe, you know, again, in my core, that a definition of an educated person, you know, so somebody who graduates from our district should see themselves as, you know, somebody who has the skills, the confidence and the responsibility to go out and make the world a better place. In terms of technology, I'm, you know, I'm a Luddite. I mean, I've, you know, I've always been.
We've missed you on Twitter, Richard.
Yeah, yeah. Missed me on Twitter. But I got to say that part of that has always been philosophical. And I agree with Camille. I think one element that we need to rapidly introduce into our district's curriculum is literacy, social media literacy. You know, we've had media literacy for a number of years, but let's be clear. You know, the aims of social media companies are not to make the world a better place. They are to make money. And, and the way they make money is by manipulating people, particularly young people, addicting them to these technologies and changing their actual, you know, behavior and sense of who they are individually. And it's a danger. And young people need to understand that. It's not that the technology itself is good or bad, any more than any technology. You know, through our history, has itself been good or bad, it's who controls it and who understands it. And if young people are educated to understand that they can actually take control over this technology and not be controlled by it, it is part of, you know, what I think is going to allow young people to actually go out and make the world a better place. But let's be clear, you know, these technology platforms are targeting young people in the way that tobacco companies have targeted young people in the past. You know, that, that, you know, mass media has targeted young people in the past. And young people have to understand what's happening and how they get a hold of technology. And the last thing I'll just say, and this is, you know, sorry to be very philosophical about this, but I think that if you look at our history, where we have devolved into the kind of divisive politics that we have today and just the divisive nature of our society has consistently happened when technology is introduced that is beyond the grasp of most people. The technology is out in front of what people are able to understand about it. And then I think there's a, there's a reaction and there's, you know, people start to get a sense of what that technology is about. It becomes more regulated, people have more confidence in what to do with the technology. And then I think we get to a place where we actually listen to each other more, respect each other more and are able to solve problems. I think we're in an era right now where the technology is out in front. And I think that's producing the kinds of divisiveness that we saw last night. And I think it's important, again, for young people to believe that as their generation moves forward, they're the ones that are going to have to take control of this technology. And I think when they do, we're going to see a different level of civic dialogue that will actually lead to us being able to solve problems that today seem intractable.
Yeah, can I just add something really quick to that, Matthew?
Keep it, keep it brief, if you would.
Yeah, no, really, really, really brief. I know, I know. So there's a documentary called Social, The Social Dilemma. It's on Axios and it speaks exactly to what Richard is talking about, which Matthew is already familiar with that, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, a lot of people have been suggesting it to us in, I think it would be in these forums, but in other settings as well. Yeah, it's on Netflix as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would just add that I think you'd both be interested in listening to our podcast because we do get into mental health and we do get in social media a lot.
That's great.
Also, thank you for thinking we, we might be a part of Gen Z.
Yeah, for the, to correct the record, I'm a millennial.
This was a great conversation. Why don't you guys go to your closing statements? And Richard, why don't you go first?
I've rambled on so much. Look, I, you know, I, I believe in what we've done in this district over the last decade. I believe that when we set high standards for our students and we come together as a community and it's not always easy, we're able to actually make the kind of changes that lead to our students doing better. We've got a long way to go, but as long as we stick to that process of always taking the next level and saying, we can do better and, and our students are, are capable of doing, of meeting any challenge that we put in front of them. But in order to get there, we've got to, we've got to get there together as a community and not by pointing fingers at each other. I think that's the strategy that I will continue, you know, to believe in and try to lead in this district if I'm re-elected. We're in this crisis that we've never seen before and that we, you know, again, that none of us fully understand. But the way we get out of this crisis and we get, the way we get to a better place is to continue to push ourselves and say, we're not going to wait for somebody else to solve our problem. We're going to innovate. We're going to figure out what we need to do to get our students back in school safely. And we're going to do it by working together as a community and not, you know, dividing and pointing fingers at each other. So I, I, you know, I believe in what we've done. I believe it's the right approach to get us through this current crisis. And I believe it's the right approach to, to get us, you know, to the point that our district is really educating all of our students in a way that allows our students to then go forward and make this world a better place.
Thank you, Richard. Camille?
Okay, so my top priority, excuse me, my top priorities for my platform are accountability, school safety and student success and career readiness. I'm prepared to lead in the mission of San Diego Unified so that all students will graduate with the skills, motivation, curiosity and resilience to succeed in their choice of college and career, to lead and participate in the society of tomorrow. I want our students to be ready and to be able to be successful, whatever that means for them. I just, I want to be able to support and advocate for students and also to listen to the parents in, in my community to be involved and to participate in their child's education, to know that their voices are valued. Students and parents, teachers, counselors, administrators, we all need to come together and all reiterated again, we need to come together at the table and we need to come up with solutions, especially in this time of such stress. Thank you.
Thank you, Camille. And thanks again, you guys. I think after last night's debate, I think we all needed a civil discussion on ideas like this. I appreciate, appreciate this very much. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.